Okay.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Beverly School Committee's Subcommittee Meeting on Curriculum Instruction and Student Life, the first one of the 2021 school year. Today is Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. And if you've noticed, we're meeting in a hybrid model today using a remote meeting application provided at no cost to our district with captioning. BEFCAM is broadcasting for us this evening. Thank you, BEFCAM, allowing for public access to the open portions of the meeting. I'm a little rusty. On June 16th, 2021, the governor signed Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Among other things, this bill allows public bodies such as this to continue to hold meetings remotely until April 1st, 2022. This specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present and asks our body to use technical methods to allow safe public access. We would encourage viewers to utilize the BEFCAM streaming options this evening if possible. So I am going to ask Ms. Abell if she would mind doing our attendance and then I will...
Sure. For the... Sure. For the record, present are Dr. Kenan McKenzie, Rachel Abel, John Malady, Recording Secretary Liz Karan, Dr. Dorothy Flaherty, also present, Dr. Andre Morgan, Dr. Suzanne Cherochek. We're joined by a number of parents. Also sitting in the audience is School Committee Member Robinson. Online, we're joined by our citizen representatives, Largin Sudak, Karen Goodno McGuire, and Joanne Hildreth. Thank you for serving on this Subcommittee. We also are joined by Principals Julie Smith, Erin Sweeney, Gabrielle Montivecki, and Judy Miller from our Technology Department is joining us online.
Thank you, Ms. Abell. And I apologize that I'm a little rusty. It's been a couple of weeks, but I'm not rusty with this. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And my favorite part of the meeting, turning it over to Dr. Flaherty.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our June...
Thank you. I guess you're not the only rusty one. So the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the June 2nd, 2021 meeting. We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Yeah, we actually do need to do a roll call vote because we have some remote participants. I'll call the roll for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. Joanne Hildreth?
Yes.
Thank you. Karen Goodno McGuire?
Yes.
And Largin Sudak?
Yes.
I don't remember if you vote or not, Dr. Flaherty.
Yes. I don't think I do, but...
Okay. We'll just cover that base. Thank you.
Just in case. Well, we're going to take our items a little bit out of order this evening as we have a presentation from two of our coaches. But just as we start our agenda, I just wanted to welcome everybody back. This is our first agenda of the school year, and it's been a great couple of weeks as we welcome everybody back and getting to see everybody face to face. Although we're still masked, we had hoped that wouldn't be the case, but everybody's just jumping right in, and it's been a wonderful couple of weeks getting around and seeing everybody. As you'll hear, we do not have our student reps yet this evening. We do not usually meet in September because we usually have met the first week of the month, but under our new setup, we will be meeting on the second Wednesday of the month prior to the School Committee meeting. And just because of the short turnaround since we've come back to school, we don't have all of our student reps in place, but they will be joining us for the October meeting. And we can't wait to hear their input on some of the topics that we'll be discussing this year. So it's my pleasure this evening to first introduce to you two of our literacy coaches at the elementary level. Cynthia Santa Saros... I always mess the name up, I'm sorry. Santa Saroso and Heidi Moran. They helped to lead a review committee in the spring last year with all of our literacy coaches. As you know, from our curriculum review cycle, we are going into an ELA review this year, and that will be done K through 12. We knew the elementary level would probably be a little bit more involved because we were looking at whether we needed to replace our current reading series or not to meet our students' needs and to provide high-quality curriculum materials. So we started back in the spring, and we gave the charge to the literacy coaches to throw a very wide net out to look at as many resources that are out there as possible. And their task, as they will tell you in more depth in a few minutes, was to come back with four finalists that we would then use with a broader committee, including teachers, literacy coaches, and then this spring to narrow it to two, who will then work with the leadership team and the principals to bring a recommendation back to you, hopefully right around the beginning of the next year. And so tonight, there is no action that you need to take. We just wanted to keep you involved in the process along the way. And I'm going to turn it over to Cynthia and Heidi to bring you up to date on how we've gotten to this point in our work. Cynthia, do you have to go through some slides to get down to yours?
Can press the microphone.
I think you're probably around slide seven. Right there. And if you click on the picture, it'll bring you to your presentation.
Okay. All right. Good evening. My name is Cynthia Santa Swasso, and I'm an instructional coach at Centerville. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm going to start our presentation by giving you an overview of our process and rationale. Then Heidi will talk specifically about each program. There have been many contributors in this process and some changes along the way. Thank you to Dr. Flaherty for laying out such a clear process for us, and thank you to the following people who have been part of this process. Amy Blanchard, Lauren Oxford, Michelle Zampel, Jen Barretto, Marcy Nelson, Nora Booth, and Julie Shimana, who's here tonight. Some folks have shifted in roles in this, in the district, and others have left the district, but they all played a vital role in this process. The goal that we set out with was to provide a report with our four top choices for ELA programs to the leadership team based on a thoughtful program review. Before we began researching the programs, there were many factors that had to be discussed. And first was the timeline for this initial phase. Phase one involved much of the pre-work for this process. The literacy and instructional coaches worked together to determine which programs met expectations and which ones did not. In March, we worked to establish non-negotiables for an ELA program, which we will look at on an upcoming slide. In April, we compiled a list of programs, gathered resources, and created a review protocol. In May, we reviewed 11 ELA programs and narrowed that down to four top choices. And in June, we created this report for our final recommendations for Phase One. We're just getting into Phase Two now. We're presenting to you and will be presenting to staff tomorrow, including a larger group of stakeholders. This group is expanded to central office staff, principals, grade-level representatives of teachers from each building, an EL representative, and a special ed representative. This allows us to have many stakeholders examining the final choices. In this month and next month, we'll be hearing directly from publishers with the opportunity to speak directly with curriculum specialists. After we've heard from publishers and reviewed all the materials, we'll narrow to two programs. After that, our grade-level representatives at each building will pilot or field test the programs. Each teacher will teach one unit from both programs, allowing them to compare and contrast the programs. This is different from a traditional model that has a different school, pilot a different program. Oftentimes, we found when that happens, schools choose what they've used because they haven't been able to experience anything else. But this method will allow teachers to examine both programs and make a thoughtful decision. After that, the final recommendation will be made with implementation in September of '22. These are the non-negotiables that were created in the spring with Dr. Flaherty, the elementary principals, and the coaches. We want to ensure that our new program is rigorous, but it provides scaffolds to allow it to be accessible to all students. The new program must meet expectations on CURATE and ED reports, which are state and national curriculum review tools. We must use rubrics and have consensus on review tools and review criteria. The new program must be culturally responsive. The new program must follow the science of reading. We must include a review of our current core programs, Reading Street, Foundations, and Hagerty. And we must be able to continue interdisciplinary projects in some capacity, including project-based learning, which is something that we take great pride in. Our staff has spent much time developing their knowledge on this topic and creating units. We want to be able to continue to implement that in some capacity. Our list was lofty, and it was a long process. And during the spring, I attended a workshop through DESI and saw this image. This has been the image that has framed our beliefs. We're continually reminded that there is no perfect program. There is no unicorn. But there are many strong horses and many good contenders for programs. This has helped guide us, and we think it will help guide teachers in the process, too. And we're going to show you some of those strong programs tonight. One of the other areas that we just wanted to note as a priority for us was cultural responsiveness. This was a huge priority as it's a focus in the city and has been challenging for us as there has not been a wide range of products with outstanding reviews on cultural responsiveness in the industry. Cultural responsiveness will need to be a priority area for discussion, including how to embed diverse literature and culturally responsive teaching strategies into instruction. Fortunately, we have resources, and we'll continue to build these resources. The coaches received BEVEd grants in the spring for diverse literature, and it is already being incorporated into planning and instruction. There were several areas that the coaches had to come to consensus on before we even began looking at programs. The first was should we consider not adopting a new program? We would only utilize PBL and teacher-developed units. After conducting research, we feel it would be best to adopt a new ELA curriculum to provide a solid foundation for elementary students while purposely integrating PBL units in at certain points in the year. For us, adopting a new ELA curriculum and providing students with access to high-quality instructional materials really boils down to equity. I attended a workshop through DESI on that topic in the spring and want to share some of the highlights with you from that as it so strongly supported our rationale. When we provide students with high-quality materials that are based on research, we can significantly improve student outcomes. Teachers spend between seven and 12 hours a week searching for and creating their own instructional resources. This causes great variation in schools and districts and can give students inconsistent learning experiences. To further that, 49% of ELA materials that ED reports has reviewed meet expectation for alignment to curriculum, but only 15% of the materials used nationwide by teachers are aligned. These high-quality instructional materials are the base of our Tier One instruction for all students in a multi-tiered system of support. All students need access to evidence-based curriculum before we begin to add in interventions. This is particularly significant for students of color and students living in poverty who have less access to high-quality instructional materials than their peers. A 2015 study found that low-income students are less likely than high-income students to have quality content and curriculum in the classroom. Additionally, students of color and students from low-income backgrounds were less likely than white students and those with higher incomes to be in classrooms with grade-level appropriate assignments. In Massachusetts, in the class of 2016, one out of every 11 low-income students dropped out of high school, one out of every eight Latino students dropped out of high school, and one out of every seven English learners dropped out of high school. There is no excellence without equity. The second topic that we came to consensus on was the desired grade span for the new program. We strongly feel that a K-4 program would best serve our students with the option for expansion into middle school if it was desired. We have seen such success with the implementation of ZERN Math this year in K-4. The vertical progression allows students to build upon concepts and common vocabulary from year to year, and it also allows teachers to share the same language and understanding of the program. I'm going to pass it over to Heidi now, and she is going to talk about some of the specific programs that we have evaluated and selected for further review.
I'm Heidi Moran. I'm the instructional coach at Cove School. And so out of those 11, we narrowed it down to the four. And just a recap of our non-negotiables, we just had to have, had to meet expectations on CURATE and ED reports, it had to meet expectations for culturally responsive literature practices, follow the science of reading, allow for interdisciplinary projects in PBL, and contain rigorous learning yet accessible for all students. And so from there, these were the four final choices. American Reading Company, and this is just a quick graphic of how it met, but if you wanted to find out more, we have the link from CURATE that got an overall rating. Also, high ratings on ED reports. And so from there, what we did was the coaches sat together, we looked at lesson plans, we looked at the teacher curriculum guides, we did research on our own, we met with the curriculum representatives, and we tried to figure out what it was about this program that would meet our expectations. And so from there, so this is still a very objective process. These were the pros and cons of the program as stated by the research. It aligns with NGSS standards at each grade level for science. It has an integration of very high-quality texts for trade books and tasks, a strong school-to-home connection with books, and the materials include authentic writing tasks based upon student-chosen research projects. What didn't meet was our foundational skills. The phonics and phonological awareness components do not align with the science of reading as stated. Phonics is not explicitly taught in kindergarten, and phonics and the phonemic awareness components are not systematic, explicit, or sequential. After viewing the materials, we found that it was lacking in resources for our L students, our English-language students. It's lacking in explicit grammar instruction. And rather than using grade-level text and making it accessible to students, they use level text versus the use of grade-level text for L students, which could, according to the research on the program, create an equity issue. And there was an emphasis on independent reading and readers' workshop. And so we looked at the Mass Department of Ed. They put out something that helps teachers when planning curriculum and when doing professional development with our staff. We looked to ensure that our reading program encompasses all of this, both the foundational strands and the knowledge strands. And so for American Reading Company, we found that it met the guidelines for teaching elements of the language comprehension, vocabulary in morphology, knowledge, syntax, and grammar. And where it did not meet, the higher-level language skills due to the fact that the students read a lot of level text, depending on, so our struggling readers would be reading lower-level text with less rigorous vocabulary. And for our foundational skills, while elements were there, they weren't taught sequentially or explicitly. It would come up as they were struggling. Core Knowledge Language Arts, we'll call it CKLA for short, also got an overall rating. So you'll see that it met both of these. And this is a comprehensive program, and so this would take the place of our current foundational programs. And so this met all of the foundational standards that I mentioned and all of the language comprehension, including higher-level language skills. So it has, all of these programs have authentic text versus excerpts. And so what the research showed, the pros of the program were foundational skills are embedded within the third-grade program, but for the others, you could choose to use your own foundational skills or use theirs. They're meant to be taught in sequence primarily. Only 25% of respondents said the materials help differentiate instruction effectively for students working below grade level. So it was a bit confusing because 25% found that to be a pro, while 25% also found that to be a con, that only 25%. It was kind of strange the way they worded it. There were options for demonstrating learning, and they were varied. They included movement, writing, speaking, and listening. It contains real books, not excerpts of text like your typical basal wood in the past, which would be a large compilation of books where you get just a small segment of the text rather than the whole thing. And the materials provide frequent opportunities for students to engage in structured, evidence-based discussions. Foundations integrity could continue to be used as it is in our district from K to two, but you would be teaching the foundational strands for three and up through that program. So some of the things that the research stated and in our discovery of the materials after the fact, multiple perspectives were not always considered. Materials were aggressively paced, 180 to 186 instructional days per school year with just four to six days for review and reteaching, which could present somewhat of an implementation challenge, heavily workbook-based. Our third program, EL, also called LearnZillion, also, as you'll see, only ones that met are here. This one also met for both foundational and knowledge strands. So it's a comprehensive program. Some of the pros for teacher slides are pre-made and interactive for student engagement, which makes teacher usability a bunch... So they'll still have input on how to deliver the instruction, but it comes with lots of helpful tools for teachers. Materials follow the principles of universal design for learning. Each module has a meeting students' needs section with suggestions for providing students with various means of accessing and demonstrating learning. Foundations integrity, as we use currently, could stay and continue to be utilized. PD is available from the publisher based on need. 30% said they help differentiate instruction effectively for students below grade level. The book list, when we started looking through the authentic text, revealed that over 75% of the texts in grades K through 2 are written by only white authors. Only 20% of survey respondents said materials help them provide appropriate accommodations and modifications for students with disabilities. Topics were, so then we also researched teacher input. What do the teachers really think about it? And often, we read that they felt that the topics were a bit repetitive, such a heavy focus in one grade level on birds or trees. And lastly, wit and wisdom. So it met for the language comprehension. The foundational standards are met because this program was meant to be aligned with our current foundational programs, which are Foundations Integrity for both phonics, phonemic awareness, and automatic word recognition. So in terms of the automatic word recognition, this program includes G-Ods, which are decodable texts, so once students are taught their phonics in the classroom, we want them to apply it. So this program comes with books that do that and a little something different than your typical decodable text, which is what you might think of as the cat's at on the mat. It will take that further and practice what goes, what's taught in foundations and then build knowledge with that, too, rich language, vocabulary. So that's what the G-Ods are. They're meant to be taught with this program. It's a very rigorous curriculum, high expectations for all students. The publisher highly recommends using Foundations Integrity to support the program, which is our current foundational program. Literature is inclusive of many cultures. It contains examples of art and music from many cultures. The geography, history is a big part of it. There's connections around the globe, so you would be using your maps a lot, your globes. Multiple perspectives, historically accurate, and includes lots of primary sources. It also contains authentic literature, not excerpts of texts. Materials provide frequent opportunities for students to engage in structured, evidence-based discussions and Socratic seminars, even at the youngest grade levels. Scaffolds are included for UDL to accommodate struggling readers, and also they can participate in the grade-level material rather than modifying at a lower level. The cons, it's expensive. It comes with a high cost. The G-Ods are an additional cost. It lacks a foundational skills program because it's meant to be aligned with Foundations Integrity. The materials do not support independent reading, but fail strongly in whole-group discussion versus kids sitting by themselves and reading. So it lacks a small group component for the comprehension. It's a rigorous curriculum, which can be seen as positive, but can also be a bit of a challenge for teachers to implement when they might be more accustomed to using the leveled readers and using lower-level text for struggling readers versus accommodating grade-level text and making that more accessible. And so our final four. Those are the ones. And any questions? Yes?
Thank you. So is this the first time we've had the teachers pilot programs like this? Did I get that right in the notes in terms of not having, once, like, errors? Do one? And I think this is a great idea. I like this kind of like outside-the-box thinking and letting everyone get a chance to sample and try their best.
Yes. I think we've typically in the past, or school districts, have done that where they each take one and come together and talk about the strengths. And so by using vertical alignment and person from each school, but at different grade levels, we can kind of compare the units because what might be appropriate for third grade... grade may not be appropriate for first. And so we want to make sure that whatever program we choose will work for all grade levels and for all students.
I'm looking for hands for our remote participants, I don't know if any of our citizen representatives had any questions for our presenters. I don't see any hands, Mr. Malady.
That was incredibly informative, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you for allowing us to share it with you.
I want to thank them and our coaches that have left and our new coaches that have stepped right up and are joining in. It's been a joy working with them, and you can see the amount of time and effort and passion, really. One of the things we said to our administrators at the retreat this year is find your passion project so that you can stay energized, and that's what's going to make you do your best work. And I can tell you that this has been a passion project for them, and we are incredibly lucky to have all of our coaches, but especially tonight, our two presenters in front of us, because they bring the passion to this work every day, and thank you for all of the work you do. And we'll be back once we get through Phase Two. Just give me a minute to get back. Okay, I also wanted to give you a little bit of an update on summer professional development. It's been busy for both adults and for kids over the summer, you'll see in a moment, and you saw back in June the very rich offerings that we had out there, most of them in asynchronous format, so that teachers could work at their own pace. It was quite obvious that people were exhausted, we were exhausted, so the amount of summer PD that people chose to do was lower than in past summers. But we are also only in our first few days back to school, and so we're still waiting for all of the submissions of documentation to come in. But what we are going to do, I've been working with Judy Miller, and we're going to repackage some of those opportunities that we had that we thought were valuable, and we'll be repackaging them to put together another choice board that can be used this fall, and so that people will be able to revisit some of the great offerings that were there. What we did have, though, is that had a lot of interest, and we are very proud of the work that was done, was a three-credit grad course that was offered by Katie Novak and Merkhu Chardin, and it was called If Equity Is a Priority, UDL is a Must. And we saw the book that, when it came out, we said this just aligned so nicely to our district goals around UDL and equity, and it really taught teachers how to use a UDL perspective in order to achieve equity in their classrooms. This is, these authors are internationally known for their work in UDL and equity, they finished co-writing the book, which we purchased for each of the teachers that took the course, and we have some additional copies that we'll be using throughout the year in different formats. We're looking at, Judy can, Judy takes a good course, she comes back and figures out how can we tweak this to put a course together for our own staff, and she's in the process of doing that, and we'll be bringing that to you in the near future. There were over 100 teachers from Massachusetts that took this course, and of those, 20 of them were from Beverly, and we had representation from all grades, K to 12. They're in the process right now of finishing their final projects, which we are going to review here at the district level, as well as them submitting it for their course credit. Then, starting at the leadership team retreat, all of our administrators, the entire team, anybody who is a evaluator within the system for classroom teachers, is taking the class through MATSAL, which is the Massachusetts Association of Teachers of Speakers of Other Languages. The course is called Leading for English Learner Equity and Achievement. We took the first session together this summer, there is some work we need to do in the next couple of weeks, and then we will have our final session on September 27th, I believe. And this will provide 15 PDPs, but will also provide us with a common language and a common approach to how we're looking for equity and cultural responsiveness when we're doing evaluations throughout the district, which is also one of our district School Improvement Plan goals. These are just some takeaways from the course and some of the key pieces that they hoped that everybody would walk away with, and that was first, to establish firm, rigorous goals, but with flexible means and scaffolds to help all students to be able to achieve those goals. Consider student variability, such as culture, race, identity, language, income, disabilities, and recent trauma, as we all know that there's been trauma through the pandemic that we have been going through. Ask what barriers might exist that will inhibit all students from being able to learn and meeting our goals. And then the big difference when we use UDL is that we plan ahead of time, it's not after the fact and trying to reteach, but it's really purposefully planning ahead of time where you think there may be barriers for students in your classroom, and making sure that by meeting their needs, you're meeting all students' needs in the class. And then to assess and adjust based on feedback and the use of heavy formative assessments so that you can address individual needs and individual learning gaps or stretches that need to happen as well, if students already know the material. Continued to be a busy summer place for students, I was really proud of the work that our schools did, and they were busy all summer long. We had 329 students that participated in some type of acceleration camp or boost camp in grades one through eight, and then also our rising 10th graders. And the support from DESI allowed us to provide grants for this to happen, and the acceleration camps lasted one week, but all of the schools had an extension of that for either an additional week up to five weeks, depending on the school. And for the early elementary grades in one, two, and three, one and two, we focused on literacy, three and four focused on math and STEM integration, they had specials while they were there every day. And for the rising eighth graders and the rising 10th graders, they were math camps. And the data that we're showing is that it really did not just stop the summer slide, but students made gains while they were here with us. So we're very proud of the work that happened there, and we hope that we'll see the benefit of that this fall as each of the schools implement their acceleration plan to keep all students on grade-level learning. What you'll hear in the upcoming weeks and months to come, we have our, already have our yearly assessment calendars in place, the benchmark testing and benchmark assessments are going to be key in being able to meet those needs and the individual learning needs of students and the impact that the pandemic had. And those are already in place at each of the three levels, middle school, elementary, and high school. Our literacy teachers and all of our kindergarten teachers had a screen, a training yesterday on a new screener that we're going to be using that is directed specifically at kindergarten, and it's going to be able to give them a wealth of knowledge and interventions that they can use to help our earliest students and earliest readers. We were very fortunate as a member, a past member of ECLC, this was something that was offered to us and is being funded through ECLC in a pilot year, so we're very grateful for their support. There was a lot of very positive input from both our literacy coaches and the teachers after yesterday's training. This summer, we also had all of our math coaches attend a ZERN training. As we're implementing new curriculum, one of my biggest passions is making sure that we provide the professional development and the support that we, teachers need in order to implement new curriculum with fidelity. And so in that process, we had our math coaches trained, and we also purchased professional development that is asynchronous but will be available to all teachers that are using ZERN, and for all teachers that are using Reveal and Alex. In addition to that, as we're implementing for the first-year Reveal, we have for the next six weeks, although I believe we're going to have to change one date because it's the, there's an event at the high school, we're doing a drop-in session so that any teachers that are implementing the new program can get real-time help, or at least within the week that they're trying to implement those new lessons. And the first drop-in session for the middle school and the high school, grades six through 12, start tomorrow. And currently, all of our schools are in the process of planning their open house and curriculum nights for parents, and that starts tomorrow with the high school, and we'll keep you updated at the next meeting of when, on how the events went at other As we are the curriculum instruction and student life, I wanted to give you a brief update on student life in just the first few opening days of the school year. Today was a very special day at the high school, it was a unique and wonderful experience for me as well, as I've never seen something like this, but we had a Black Hawk helicopter land in the field at Beverly High School, and then the students had an assembly with a Medal of Honor recipient, Lieutenant Norris, he was from the US Navy, and he shared not just his story, but really some of the lessons that he's learned and trying to impart on him, that you might not know what you want to do while you're in high school, but it is there in high school that you start to push yourself to achieve, and as long as you have the courage and the integrity to go after what you want, there's, you can achieve what you want. And Mrs. Taylor really did a nice wrap-up with the students as well, by underscoring that while the students may not know exactly where they want to go in their life at high school level, that this is the time of their life when they're building their character traits that will allow them to get to where they need to be in the future. So this was quite the experience this morning. And just a quick update, the schools are already very, very busy, the high school fall sports are underway, the fall season has already begun. I guess there is a big soccer game this weekend on Saturday, and there's also a big football game, and they're playing Haverhill, so I can't wait to go and see that. The drama additions, drama auditions are underway, the performance is going to be Clue, and we have 26 clubs and activities that are currently either getting up and running or just in the planning stages, but will be up shortly. At Beverly Middle School, they have already started the planning for National Junior Honor Society to Return, Student Council, cross-country, I was here yesterday, and they had a practice yesterday, so that is already underway, and they are also planning their drama auditions, and their show will be Schoolhouse Rock Live. And in addition to that, in speaking with Mrs. Oliver, they also have some plans for some great new clubs, and we're excited to be able to bring those forward to you in the coming weeks and months. And then finally, for tonight, as, this will be just going to leadership and to CISL members, you should have received it earlier this evening with the link to a Google survey, and if you could fill that out and get it back to me by Friday, the 17th. We, I really would like, as we, you know, in our new format, we only have an hour before school committee each month, and so I want to make sure that we're efficient, but also providing you with the information that you would like to hear more about, or information that you would like to have discussions about. And so there's a quick survey, it shouldn't take you more than, you know, a few minutes to tell me where you're thinking and what you might like to hear, and as part of the October meeting, I will come back with a draft of a topics for the year, like we did last year. And of course, knowing that there may be things that come up throughout the year that warrant coming to the committee that we don't currently know or can plan for. So thank you in advance for filling that out. Any questions on anything that you've heard this evening?
Mr. Malady, I'm looking online to see if any of our citizen reps have any questions, either come off of mute or raise your hand. I'm not seeing any hands.
What a great way to start the school year with our meetings, with our curriculum instruction and student life, so thank you very much, Dr. Flaherty and your team, and I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Yeah, but would you mind helping with the roll call, please? Thank you.
Joanne Hill, breath, motion to adjourn that has been seconded, how do you vote?
Microphone, please.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, and Karen Gooden McGuire?
Yes.
And Lauren Sudak?
Yes.
Dr. Kenan McKenzie?
Yes.
John Malady?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes, we are adjourned.
Excellent, thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Gabrielle Montivecki, Julie Smith, and Lisa Oliver. It looks like we have a couple of parents that join. And Judy Miller, our Director of Technology, is with us online. So without further ado, our first order, now that we've called to order, will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And might I ask Mayor Cahill to lead us this evening? Thank you.
There's a flag right here on the side of the wall here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Cahill. Normally, our second agenda item is recognition of students, employees, and community members. We look forward to bringing that forward at our October meeting. So our next order of business is the approval of the meeting records from our June 16, 2021 Regular School Committee meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Were there any corrections, addendums, additions? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor of approving the meeting records?
Ms. Viznick, I'm not voting because I wasn't in attendance.
You weren't in attendance. Okay, so we have six with one abstention for the record, Ms. Bergeron. And next, we would normally be hearing from our student representative to the school committee, who is Hollis Colby. She has a conflict this evening, so instead, I would like to entertain a slight shift in the agenda so that we can hear from one of our educators, who is here under the Superintendent Report 8A, with a request for an overnight field trip to Salamanca, Spain. I took French and German. I probably didn't pronounce that right. And is proposed for the 2022 school year. So Mary Beth Rodolico.
Rodolico.
Please. There is a microphone up there, if you don't mind. We were presented with information in our packets in advance. And you just need to push the button so that it turns green. So we can, yeah, all the way down. There you go. And then you can let go. There you go. Thanks.
Just before she begins, I just wanted to take a moment and share with all of you. Mary Beth actually reached out to us in the spring and had asked to come forward at the last June meeting. But we were very unaware of what the circumstances would be regarding international travel, what would be going on in terms of some of those things. So we were coming forward today largely because the policy that the school committee has for overnight field trips requires that we bring this forward to you six months prior to the trip. And I believe the trip is scheduled for April 14, so this is one of the last opportunities that we have to bring it forward. I don't know that any of us are quite sure exactly what is going to happen with international travel as time goes on, but we do know that the countries are open with certain restrictions around travel. And so we wanted to bring it forward for discussion so that at least we were in compliance with the school committee policy. So I'm going to turn it over to Mary Beth to talk a little bit about what the trip will look like, and then she'll answer any questions that you have.
Okay, well, I've been dying to be here. And thank you all for listening to me. The trip is basically the two-week vacation, two-week vacation, two-week abroad. There's a homestay with the students going to school in the morning from 9:00 to 1:00, and then they're doing cultural activities afterwards. I've been doing this for two years. I did this one trip about two years ago, but then we had COVID, so we couldn't get going again. The first two trips were unbelievable. The students really enjoyed the homestays because they were actually staying with the home versus in a hotel. And like, you know, they stayed in Salamanca. For two weeks, they attended the University of Salamanca. And I just, I've got kids asking me every day, are we going to Spain? Are we going to Spain? Are we going to Spain? And I'm retiring very shortly, so I'd really like to be able to take another couple of groups with me before I take the high road. So right now, the more people I can get, the price will go down. You can see what it is, and it's, the price has not changed. The company that I've been working with has been fabulous, TNE. I have the director's main number. So bottom line is, we need to know if we can do this or not, because if we do, we have to move forward very quickly in order to get a cheaper flight on the flight, a cheaper price on the flights, and also to get the accommodation for the students, depending on how many I have. And I believe, right now, I have at least 20 to 25 students that are knocking at my door every day. Did you hear anything? Did you hear anything? And I'm like, no, tonight, tonight, tonight. So that is why I'm here, and I'm hoping that you will approve it. And I do know that Spain did just approve the third booster. And right now, I'm actually hosting a student from Brazil. And she actually is, introduced me to a lot of the other students. We have about eight exchange students now in the Beverly High School from Spain, Italy, Netherlands, France, Sweden, Brazil, and another, like, bunch from Spain. So it's really exciting to be able to see them here. And now the kids are saying, oh, my God, why can't we go? Why can't we go? So I'm just hoping that we can get this approved tonight, and I can move forward and start our trip in 2022, and hopefully 2023, until I take off. Are there any questions about, in regards? I mean, I've been here before with many, many trips, but this is a different trip, and I highly, really recommend this trip because my kids tell me they cannot believe the difference. And even the parents tell me when the kids come home, they're a completely different person because they're more independent, and they're taking responsibility for what they're doing and how they're getting around the city. Because I'm not holding their hand the whole time. I'm with them every day, but I'm not holding their hand.
Thank you. I think I saw Mayor Cahill first.
Sure. Thanks, Madam President. Ms. Rodolico Linsky, it's so good to see you. God, we all want to say yes to this, I know. So a couple, couple of questions. One, what are the airlines doing in terms of, you know, guarantees or reimbursables or refundables? And where are they at right now? Because, you know, to go ahead and start to try to plan, and there's the potential that it might not happen. You just don't know how things are going to be come next April. We all hope, like heck, we're in a much better place, right? But what do you know about that piece of it?
Well, considering what happened with this last trip and getting the refunds for the kids that were supposed to go in 2020 with me, and then they had signed up to go 2021 with me. So the company itself is really working with us to try to say, okay, so if we can get this done, and if you have to cancel, then we can refund that money if it's done in a certain amount of time.
Right, right.
So that's how we're trying to get around it so that they can get a lot more of their refund back if we have that ample time to play with. If we don't, then, you know, and she's got, she's got it written up in the, actually into the policy that she sent over to the new, they've recreated their refund policy because of COVID. And, I mean, they almost went bankrupt, as much as all the other tour companies have. But, so they're willing to work with us and make sure that it's not a complete wash, that the students are not going, like, because I actually thought that the last trip, everybody was going to lose their money. That's, it was a real scare, that they were going to lose almost $4,000. But they ended up working it out through the airlines and the COVID, and through all the COVID factors, so it all worked out in the end. But not, you know, and we're trying to avoid that for this coming April, say something should happen and say, they do have an absolute time, you know, chance to get out if they want to get out or whatever.
Appreciate that. And then I have a question about the in-home piece. So in Salamanca, they'll be staying with families? And then there are a couple nights in a hotel in Madrid?
Hmm, one.
Okay.
Just one. We fly, when we, we go to Madrid, because it's a two-and-a-half-hour flight, I mean, two-and-a-half-hour drive. So we don't want to have to get up at 5:00 in the morning. So we go to Madrid on Saturday, spend the night there, and then fly home on Sunday. So it's basically just a night, overnight, to get down to Madrid and get to the airport. But we do go stay in a hotel. And the kids that I have from Spain that are here are telling me that it's pretty open over there, and that people are wearing masks. But there's a high amount of people wearing masks just for safety reasons, just like they are here.
So what I want to ask about the in-home stay is, it's important to me, as I'm hearing this and thinking it through, that all of our students and chaperones will be fully vaccinated, and that anybody in the home in Spain and the family they're staying with who's eligible is fully vaccinated. Is that a part of the program and the requirements already?
I would probably have to agree with that, that before, I mean, and as I said, Batucia, who's run, who's the head of the company, I mean, that would be a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned, because I said that Spain has a pretty good high, good high vaccination rate right now, and any, I think the company may even make it mandatory. I'm not sure. I'm not speaking for them, but I'm pretty sure that that would probably be something mandated, because they don't want the students getting anything coming over because they're responsible for the students, too, as well as I am.
So it's the company that finds the host family?
Mm-hmm.
So I'd be inclined to want any approval that we give to have those terms in there.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So that, so that the company you're working with would know that for Beverly High kids to come, that's going to need to be the dynamic in the homes they stay in.
Absolutely. I could call her tomorrow, and I have it done tomorrow. And she can start working on that and making sure. And I'm pretty sure that that might be something that they follow. As I said, this company is very rigid in their policies as far as who is allowed to host a child or not. And most of these people are return people. They're not somebody that they just picked up for one year. These are people that have been doing it for years and years and years and years.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Visnick.
I'm curious, with it being two weeks, how do we, so maybe this question is maybe not so much for you, but maybe more for you, how do we handle the children missing their other classes during some of that time?
It's never been a problem before. They just either make up the work, get the work ahead of time. Most of the kids do it on the plane going over because this is a long flight, or they do it on the way back. They also have homework over in Spain. So they're actually home at night doing homework. So if they've got classes that they are responsible for here, of course, they have to maintain their, their work in their class as well. That second week is not considered just, the second week is to really get them saturated in the community and really immersed in the society. So they're still continuing to do their own work from here. And that was what they chose to do. That's what they signed up for.
I understand that that's their responsibility. I guess.
It's the expectation, too.
It's the expectation, absolutely.
I guess my question is more from an administrative point of view and our absence policy.
So I would say that we would be working with them. The work expectations are there for them, but we would make the exception for them to be able to be out because we know where they are, and it would be an excused absence for them.
That's normally how it is, honestly, it's just an excused absent.
Do other committee members have questions? Mr. Milady.
Just a procedural question. I like the mayor's question about the host families and vaccinations, but I also understand that, for the sake of the kids and the program, the sooner the vote, the better. So I don't know, would we have to put stipulations on the motion? Is that something that we can do?
The time is made, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, absolutely.
Any other school committee member? Are we prepared to make a vote? Okay. All those in favor of approving with the stipulation that the in-home dynamics include fully vaccinated hosts and guests in the home? Say aye.
And that our students and chaperones participating also be fully vaccinated.
Okay. And that students and chaperones are also fully vaccinated. Thank you for that clarification. Do you need me to?
I'm drafting a motion.
So I think we're drafting a motion to approve the Salamanca.
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 Thank you. Two-week trip for our students in April, April 14 to May 1, 2022, with the stipulations that the homes, home dynamic includes fully vaccinated individuals for the hosts and guests in the home, as well as the students and chaperones. Do I, I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
So moved. Second? Yeah.
Oh, okay. Which, pick one. Okay. So Rachel Abel made the motion. Learn the Visnick seconded it. And all those in favor. We have six. All those opposed? One opposed? Okay, the motion has carried. Move forward with your planning, and please do make sure that those assurance.
I will do that. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will return to our regularly scheduled program, just a few minutes behind schedule. The next item is an open forum for citizen concerns or input to agenda-related items. And we are also considering requests for non-agenda items at this time. Again, the remarks should be limited to three minutes, and it's addressing the body. It's not a conversation, per se. I believe we have a list of members who wanted to speak. We have seven people who have signed up, and they all seem to be a little off-agenda, although tangentially connected. So we'll just start at the top. Allison Letalian. If you would go to the microphone and push the button to make sure it turns green so we can hear you. If you could state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful, too, for our minutes.
Hello, my name is Allison Letalian de Pietro. My address is 193 East Lothrup Street in Beverly, Massachusetts. And I'm here tonight to talk about some present and future policies on the mask-wearing in the school for kids. I know currently, the children are set to wear masks all the time unless they are outdoors with some breaks in between. I didn't know if there was some additional data on how COVID is affecting children, how many are hospitalized, how many are seriously ill, because it does seem like, from the data that is available from the American Academy of Pediatrics, that children getting seriously ill or hospitalized or even death is extremely rare. And it seems to me that, you know, a lot of our town are going out and living and going to cafes and going about with their day and going home and kissing their children goodnight. And these same children are coming in and having to wear a mask all day as the least affected population of everybody. And, you know, possibly the reason for the mask is the vaccine is not available to kids of certain ages, even though that's, there is a mask mandate till October 1 for everyone. However, it, there was some information that was out potentially talking about the vaccine, the, excuse me, virus load being the same for vaccinated and unvaccinated being the same. So as far as future mask-wearing, it seems like it wouldn't make sense to me that the vaccinated people would be able to remove their masks on October 1 while the other children remain vaccinated. Again, these are the children that are, seem to be most unaffected by COVID, and the people that are most affected are outliving their lives. My other concern is that if COVID isn't going anywhere anytime soon, I mean, how long are we going to have our children masked and living in this type of environment? My son was so excited today to be part of a chorus, and he was singing at the top of his lungs with a mask like this. It's kind of hard. I feel like it takes away a lot. And he has some challenges with reading social cues, and that's very difficult for him, to read faces. And he gets nervous, like me, like now, when he's sweating, and he's in class, and he's trying to focus. And of course, yes, they can survive with a mask. I mean, not that dramatic. But, I mean, how long are we going to continue to do this? And furthermore, so I'd like some more information on, you know, what people are thinking about for the future. And, you know, lastly, the lunch, the kids are, you know, I was told by the staff that the administration decided that, you know, there's a rotation. Sometimes they're eating in the cafeteria, which is great. Sometimes they're eating outside, also great. And sometimes they're eating on a floor space or in a bucket. And I know that there was, you know, we were doing the buckets last year. We had to. But, you know, for me, I'm just thinking, I mean, is there another option? Is there something else?
Thank you so much for your comments.
That we can do.
Thank you.
Rolling tables, something else. Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Jackie Granfield. Again, state your name and address for the record, please. I'll try to give a better indication when your three minutes is almost up. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you guys for hearing us tonight. My name is Jackie. Is it on now?
It is.
Right, green. Green means go. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I appreciate it. I kind of second a lot that Al said. We're just really wondering about the masks. Is, my child is in elementary school. He's not even of age to receive a vaccine. So does that mean he's going to be masked until that is something that's going to be allowed for him? And every day on the way to school, he's so upset about having to wear a mask, and that's upsetting for me. And I just think it's really taking away from the whole experience. I can't even imagine a kindergartner going into class and meeting their teacher for the first time, and they can't even see her face. Luckily, my son was able to, first day at school, be able to see his teacher. But there are many that have not, and it's just really sad. But my main reason for being here is that, unfortunately, I wasn't aware this was going on last year, or I probably would have been here sooner. The sitting on the floor to eat lunch on a dot, six feet apart, it's just, it's inhumane to me. I feel as though we're treating our children like animals. Is that same, that same mop going around, the one that goes in the bathroom, going on the cafeteria floor, the gym floor, and then you're putting my child just sitting there, could drop his food? He's seven. He'll pick it up and eat it. And I'm sure many kids would. And then even the bucket. Is there anything else we can do? Like something a little more, a pillow? Some sort of like, I mean, the tables. I don't understand the tables. I really, I mean, I'm assuming it's spatial. There's not enough space. But there's got to be another way. I've spoken to many parents of kids in other cities, and they're not sitting on the floor to eat. I just, it's really upsetting. I wish I knew about this last year. I would have definitely been putting my face in front of you guys earlier. But I just, I just think we need to try to revisit that and come up with another solution. Outside's great. The more they're outside, wonderful. But inside, cold rainy days, sitting on a floor on a dot, like waving to your friends six feet apart while you drop a pirate booty and pick it up and eat it, it just, it's just got to be another way. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next, if we could, have Kendra Hewitt. Again, state your name and address for the record.
Just push it. All right. Hi, my name's Kendra Hewitt. I am a lifelong Beverly resident. My address is 38 Rear Enon Street. That's the address of my business. And I'm here tonight representing, I do not have children in the Beverly school system, but I'm a graduate of it. And I'm representing all the moms and the parents that have come to me, very concerned about what their kids are going through with these mask mandates and the whole conversation. And mostly, what I'm most concerned about is all of these children that do have valid medical reasons that are being challenged by the school system, that has no idea of their medical history and has not been asked or informed of their medical history. And that these people are going to their medical doctors, the medical doctors they trust, many of them they've seen, their whole relationship. My husband is a chiropractor, and we promote natural health. And I bring up one of the premises that we built our business on, and that is this. The power that made the body heals the body, and you will never trump artificial immunity. Natural immunity is not being recognized. I myself have had COVID, my husband, and my five-month-old baby. She was completely fine because we believe in the strength of the host. And the second thing that is a premise in our office is the one that I think is most valid to this topic tonight. And that is this. We teach our patients that you are always your own best health advocate, and that you do, you have the power to make the choices for your family. And I think it's amazing that people that are students that are educating us right now are basing it on data that is not accurate, unless you can really show me and prove that the data that you are going off of is accurate. Where is the data that shows us that masks actually prevent the spread of COVID-19? I don't know where it is. And I'm saddened that there's not more parents here tonight. And the reason is, is because they are scared. They are scared to stand up and voice their opinion. And that's why I'm here, because I was confident that I could share it. Because I see the kids in our office that have seizures cannot wear a mask. I see the kids that have social disorders that are at all-time high. I am, my brother is a fireman in Danvers. There's people that are related to firemen in Beverly that are here tonight, and they will tell you, one of the highest statistics they're seeing right now is suicides and child abuse. Child abuse for kids that should be in the school system because they're safer here. But that's another topic for another day. I'm here just to talk about that where there is risk, there should be choice. And for some kids, there are health risks that need to have choices. And that should be whether they wear a mask or not. I'm not saying if you, everybody wants to wear a mask and feels that their child is safer with the mask, send them to school with the mask. I totally understand that.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate your time.
But it should go both ways.
Next, we have Brian McCarthy. Again, state your name and address at the microphone for the record. It is left in the on position for you.
Good evening. My name's Brian McCarthy. Live at 38 Bow Street in Beverly. I'm here to talk about the masks. I'm vaccinated myself. My son's 12, 11, I mean, sorry, going to be 12. He's not old enough, like most students. But I believe it comes down to a parent's choice on masks. If the school wants to implement something, there's other schools that are using like the three-piece shields for the desk, or an option of a face shield to form students that they have to wear a cotton face mask. He has a heart condition, so for him, that makes it harder to breathe all the time. I think the school really needs to look at the health of the children, their ability to breathe, they're in normal classes, they're sitting at a desk. Why does it hurt? Or show me the study where they can't have it off. I mean, you've already spread the desk out, so who were they hurting by having to wear a mask in the class? I can understand maybe walking down to a group or something, but all time, all the day, there's not enough study that's been done to say, what's the long-term damage on our students? We're making decisions now that can affect both the mental and physical hells, and I think the student body, the teachers, and everyone here needs to take a look and say, hey, what can we do better for our students? I'm feeling right now, we're not doing that. We're listening to just one group, half wear a mask, that's it. And I think that's shutting it out. We're taking with the parents, who it is, our children, and we should have the ultimate choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Sarah Kim. If you could state your name and address for the record once you get to the microphone. And I will indicate when you are approaching the three minutes.
Hi, so my name is Sarah Kim. My address is 42 Folger Ave, Beverly, Massachusetts. So I want to thank you all for giving us a chance to speak. I know this has been a challenging time for everybody, especially in your position where you have to make decisions that are very difficult. Sorry, I promised myself I wouldn't try to get emotional, but it's not very easy. So I wanted to start off by reading, um, something that all of you here have signed as when you joined this Beverly School Committee. It says, "As elected members of the Beverly School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that all students of the district, district receive the best education possible. In accepting this role, we hold the pursuit of that goal as our sacred duty. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business." So the first thing is, "We will support the educational welfare and well-being of all students. We will represent the needs, interests, achievement of all students in the district and place these above all else in the decisions we make." We will base our, so I'm not reading everything, but the one things I've highlighted. Base our decisions on available facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support the decisions of the majority of the committee once a decision is made. Tonight, I along with many of the parents are here because we need you to hear how these blanketed policies and mandates are affecting our children. I am here today to say that the educational well-being of all students are not being supported. The needs, interests, and achievement of all students are not being represented in the decisions that are being made. Blanketed mandates do not take into consideration the diversity that exists within a given population. I think one of the reasons, I'm gonna go off script a little bit, but one of the reasons why I'm so emotional is when I was up here listening to this trip to Spain and how amazing it will be for kids, all I can think of is that this is a trip that my kids will not be allowed to attend because my kids cannot receive a vaccination. I have three boys who are in the Beverly School District. One in fourth grade, one in seventh grade, one in eighth grade. All, all three of my children have a seizure disorder that was triggered from vaccinations. And so they will no longer receive another vaccination because I cannot take the risk, especially my youngest one, of having him develop epilepsy. He has 15-minute seizures that are triggered by heat, a slight increase in temperature. So on August 24th, after a meeting that lasted only 22 minutes, the Department of Elementary Secondary Education approved Commissioner Riley's statewide mask mandate one week before the start of school. This left parents like myself, whose youngest child didn't attend school at all last year because he can't medically, he can't wear a mask. I told you, he has a seizure disorder that is triggered by temperature, and for him to wear a mask, it is really dangerous. But it left us scrambling to figure out what our options were. Commissioner Riley's mandate states the medical exemptions will be accepted, but there is not a single doctor out there who will write an exemption because they don't want to be liable.
Thank you, Ms. Kim, for your comments. If you have additional comments, you can send them via email to the rest of the school committee. Thank you so much. I have a trouble with the handling. Donna Liakano. Again, state your name and address for the record at the microphone.
Hi, my name is Donna Liakano. I'm a lifelong resident of Beverly. My first, and thank you for letting us come, I was at the other meeting and it was closed. But you were gracious enough to answer some of our questions. So my concern about the mask is, I have two children with ADHD that suffer from anxiety. And, um, when I called the A P C P to get a note after superintendent told me there would be no specific diagnosis, I'm gonna get emotional because this is, you people lie. All right? I specifically asked you at that meeting if there will be any particular diagnosis, and you told me no. This is the second time from you and from Lisa Oliver, and I'm done. How did she get on the board? She wasn't voted in. She wasn't on the ballot for school board. Is it because Andre Morgan's here? And maybe the person who stepped down?
Ms. Liakano, I think you're getting off script at this moment. If you have, if you have-
That's right. Don't shut me up.
Mayor Cahill.
I called City, I called City Hall. She was not put on the ballot for school board. We have an election coming this year. Why isn't she on the-
I think the American answer to the procedures of the charter-
We'll pause your time. You still have your time. The city charter provides for when somebody leaves an elected position during their term, depending on how much time is left in the term, there are different ways of handling it. And the way the city charter re-read in that instance is that it was up to the school committee and city council together to elect a replacement for the person who resigned.
Okay.
Okay? And so, and that, and that's how that, so that's the process.
Okay, so we have an election coming this November. Why isn't she, why isn't there a school board member being put on the ballot this election?
So every-
So when she finishes the term, she, if she wants to rerun, she'll have to be put on the ballot, right?
So Dr. McKenzie, just like Mr. Malady, everyone else, including me, have to run for reelection.
That's right.
Right? And so that's happening this fall.
Okay. Why isn't she on the ballot?
Oh, you're, you, you gotta look at the preliminary ballot. And because there are no preliminary elections in most wards, you probably didn't see the names of people.
Well, I called City Hall and had the clerk's office read me the names of the last school election. And I was told that the woman that she represents, Ward Two, stepped down. And she was placed in her position. So now we have an election coming.
So I just explained how Dr. McKenzie-
So why don't we just let the ward place who they want?
No, 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 no. I just explained how Dr. McKenzie was elected to her seat by the, by the remaining members of the school committee and the members of the city council.
It's a public election.
No, 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 but that's how the city charter, which charter is the word that's the same as state constitution or federal constitution, it governs what we do in the city.
I mean, I-
Now, you, you seem to be looking-
Maybe I'm confused.
Yeah, no, 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 let me help you. You seem to be looking at the preliminary election, um, ballot. And there, there is no, there are not multiple candidates in most of these races. There is a preliminary in Ward Three for city council, and there's a preliminary citywide for mayor. I think that's it. So-
Yeah, that's it.
So in November, you'll see every candidate. I believe, unless I'm wrong, in, in all of the, all of the wards for school committee, there's no challenger?
Well, I would challenge her. I would challenge any one of these people.
So, so you-
And you guys like to sneak things in.
No, no, no.
Sure you do. Come on. What CRT? Can you describe what CRT is?
To make a more clear question.
Point of order. You have to direct through the chair, and the chair is saying that this woman-
Well, I don't think the question's being answered.
What, is it too tough of a question?
No.
No. Excuse me, sir. You will have to leave if you don't.
This is a public forum.
It is not a public forum.
We're asking a question and looking for a direct answer. I, i- is it safe to assume that this young woman will be on the next election-
That's right.
To make her point, to make her position official?
That's right. Because officially, she has to be voted on by the public.
Not by the-
Not by the school committee, not by doctor whoever.
Maybe the position could be filled temporarily-
Like you, Mike. You gotta get voted on by the public.
And furthermore, what qualifications did she have?
That's right.
Mr. Maloney, you, have you signed up to speak?
No, I have not.
All right.
We're, we're gonna stick to the rule-
I vowed only to speak if something didn't seem right. In the answer that, we're not getting a complete answer.
That's right.
It sounds like she, she filled a position-
I've done my homework.
That was vacated.
Can I try, can I try?
I guess.
Sure.
Until the next election.
After, after Representative Ferretti stepped down-
Then she should not be in there.
We had a special meeting, it was a joint meeting where you had members of the school committee as well as with the city council. Several applicants applied for the position. I think it might have been like four. We had a public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
Candidates spoke.
We're going to be moving on to our next speaker.
And then once that vote took place-
Donna, thank you very much.
Dr. McKenzie got to finish out-
No, they paused my time for this.
Dr. McKenzie got to finish Ms. Ferretti's term. Now, I don't know if Dr. McKenzie took out the papers to run for office.
One minute left.
If you take out the papers to run for office, you get a certain number of signatures, you then appear on the ballot.
Okay, so she should be on the ballot in the next election.
So there's two, so there's two elections. Preliminary that Mr. Cahill talked about.
Right.
And then the November election.
Right.
So if Dr. McKenzie got her signatures in on time, she will appear on the November ballot.
That's right. And school committee members have a two-year life, right, on the committee?
So Dr. McKenzie was finishing out the unfulfilled term that Ms. Ferretti had.
Okay, so when she wants to come back onto the committee, she needs to be publicly voted onto the committee?
If Dr. McKenzie filled out the paperwork to appear on the ballot, then Dr. McKenzie and the ward constituents would-
Okay, so I will keep an eye out for that. My one minute, I would like to, um-
I don't know if that was helpful, but I tried.
It was very helpful. Thank you. So my one minute, I would like to create, um, to address the critical race theory. And no matter what way you want to put it, it's still wrong to put on our kids. And for someone to ask a human being to look at two pictures of a pregnant, of pregnant women, one light-skinned and one dark-skinned, and ask people what they see. And when people answer, we see a pregnant woman. And you're told, no, you shouldn't see that, or no, people don't see that. People see, oh, how's that child gonna be treated? That's wrong. And I went on to a, a meeting with the N A A C P, I believe, and I was disgusted. Disgusted. You're not gonna come in and put critical race on our kids and tell our kids that they are wrong for being that color.
Please address the body. Thank you. Um, your time has expired. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Okay, and I understand that Tracy Assiello?
I'll be speaking first. Steve Malone?
Okay, your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name's Steve Maloney. 12 Goldsmith Avenue, Beverly, Massachusetts. I was born here. I have a child in the school. So one of the, uh, other parents was gracious enough to, um, allow me her time. Just like to follow up, out of due respect for everybody here, I'd like to follow up with, uh, the previous speaker, just to make sure that we're all understanding where we are with the new member, with all due respect. I understand, for whatever reason, a, a, a position came up vacant. Perhaps that position needs to be filled. It can't sit vacant. So the school committee or whatnot voted her, her in. First question I'd have is, what are her qualifications? Is she just a parent like all of us? Or does she come with some special qualifications that we're unaware of? And number two is, on the next election, for anybody seeking school council, committee member, whatever the case may be, will she be on that ballot? Just like anybody else would have to be, she'd have to win this position in a vote.
So generally, this is for addressing the body. It's not a response situation, but I would say that the qualifications for public office, according to our charter, is that you are a resident of Beverly in your ward for which you're seeking nomination and election, and that you are a registered voter.
No specific qualifications for this particular committee?
You must live reside in the ward.
Professional qualifications, sorry. Okay. Thank you for answering that. And secondly, will she be on the upcoming ballot?
I, I think that all of the members here, um, have taken out nomination papers and that there are no oppositions in the school committee race.
But she, she would still have to be regardless-
Can you address the whole body, please? Each of the members?
Oh, I, I thought I was. Do I need to keep on turning my head to-
Madam President, if I could, look.
I'm just asking, trying to ask a simple question. Will she be on the ballot regardless of somebody running against her? You still have to get the ballot.
As best I understand, okay? You can check with the city clerk, all right? But I believe Dr. McKenzie is on the ballot. Now, ne- neither you nor Ms. Liakano are really showing any respect for Dr. McKenzie as a human being and as an, and as a member of our school committee. I just want you to stop, Steve.
Well, no, Mike. I'm showing complete respect. I said respectfully, I'm just asking a question. How is that disrespectful? Because I'm challenging, I'm, I'm challenging?
So, so you, you are, it would be-
And Mike, just for the record, so everybody can hear, don't talk to me about disrespect. Okay? Because I went to a recycling meeting once, where you cut me off two minutes in. Second of all, I'm a combat veteran for this, for this city. And when the veterans counselor called you directly and said, were there any funds available?
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the meeting.
When I was almost losing my house, was there any funds available in that fund?
Sir, your time is expired.
So don't talk to me about respect, Mike. We've been friends for a long time, and as a friend, I love you. But when it comes to politics, Mike-
Okay, at this time, this-
So don't talk to me about disrespect. And I don't mean to get off course.
Sir, sir, your time is expired. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. No, I'll make one more statement.
No, you will not. The time is expired.
I think I will.
I don't think you will. Please.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if it's gonna be answered, question and answer today. But the parents of this school are not gonna be put up with CRT.
The chair is recommending a motion to approve the items by consensus as outlined by the superintendent. It's available in our agenda. These are warrant items A through L. Again, so that you can hear me, warrant items A through L as outlined in our meeting agenda. Looking for a motion to approve these warrants.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Since this is items by consensus, we will vote on the package. All those in favor? Seven to zero, Ms. Bergeron. Okay. Um, our next is some updates from the chair. Our summer retreat overview. Um, thank you all for being in attendance. We met at McEwen School for an overview where Dr. Morgan was gracious enough to host us in a conversation. Um, I, I believe the minutes had been presented at our committee of the whole meeting, and, um, those were approved. The, um, upcoming meeting and dates, as you'll remember, we have the, um, finance and facilities now at 6:30 stacked with our committee of the whole, which will be at 7:30 PM. Um, so remember that on your calendar. And, uh, Dr. Charchek, opening of schools, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have, um, I'm gonna return to the report that I started. Um, and we skipped over, we already took care of the overnight field trip. So I just have some information regarding the opening of school. Thank you. All right. So I, I, I put together just sort of the num, the numbers about the opening of school. Um, first of all, um, we had an opportunity to welcome quite a few new staff to school this year. We held an orientation for new staff on August 26th. And many, many thanks to the administrators who worked diligently all summer and identified these awesome hires. We had a great, uh, we have really built a great team. And as we bring new people in, um, we're really happy to have them join our team. Kindergarten numbers, we want to welcome, if you can believe it, the class of 2034. Thank you very much. That sounds like a long time from now. This year, we welcomed 340 new students to the Beverly Public Schools in our kindergarten classes. Homeschool, uh, just a, a report on homeschool. We begin the year, this year, with 93 students registering as homeschooled. That number's down from 165 in 2020 and 2021. Our transportation numbers, we continue to enroll students for buses. Our current numbers are at 1492. We continue to encourage parents, uh, to think about busing as a, an alternative transportation for their student. And in addition to that, we're transporting 43 students to Saints Academy. And then finally, food service. Uh, we're continuing to serve the universal breakfast and lunch, which means that it's free to all students. And Christina Leal proudly reported that we have served 705 breakfasts and 6,918 lunches. So, uh, we certainly are working hard in our, uh, breakfast and lunch programs. I want to talk a little bit about ESER funding. We, uh, I know that I've come to you a couple times with the ESER. We're happy to say that we've gotten final approval on both our ESER I and ESER II funds, grants. And we are in the process of applying for the ESER III grant. One of the requirements of our application process is to seek community and stakeholder input. So we're posting a survey on our website, and we'll be sharing a link through the various social media and email, as well as with community partners. The link will be open from Thursday, September 9th through Sunday, September 19th. And the feedback that we get, it's, it is a questionnaire to fill out, just really helping inform decisions as to what funding opportunities we, the city would like us to pursue in terms of our, um, moving forward with the grant. And then that brings me to close contact tracing and quarantining. And I know we didn't want to be spending this year taking a, a close look at what we're doing regarding this, but I think it's important that families and all of you know clearly what our, what our clarifications are around close contact tracing and what our requirements are. So, um, this is really just revisiting and making sure that everyone's clear on what we do. In the event of a positive case, we need to be able to readily identify close contacts. A close contact continues to be any individual who has been within six feet of a positive person for longer than 15 minutes cumulatively, within a 24-hour period. However, in a school setting, close contacts are exempt from testing and quarantining if they are vaccinated, and that would include our teachers and students who are over 12, who are fully vaccinated, or if they've been spaced three feet apart and masked. Those are the two exemptions that are offered for, um, students in school that are identified as close contacts. In order to identify close contacts more effectively, wherever possible, we're asking, we're making sure that we're seating students three feet apart, and that's measuring from the middle of the chair to the middle of the chair. And in the event, in the event that they're not three feet apart, um, in some of those instances, maybe a morning meeting, or at a teacher table lesson, or in projects that require closer than recommended seating, um, we're, we're, uh, able to monitor the amount of time that they're together. So we really need to watch. And if it exceeds 15 minutes, that's when they would be considered a close contact, and we'd have to go through the levels of whether or not they're exempt. One of the things that we're really encouraging is any outside activity, that any time we move any of these activities outside, so if it's an outdoor classroom, if we take morning meeting outside, if we eat lunch outside, if we have snack break outside, um, or we, we provide a lesson outside, that removes the need for masking and for distancing. And so we are encouraging all staff to consider this option whenever they can. Students have assigned seats for their regular classroom seating at morning meetings and in small groups, and that's so that, so that we can contact Trace and know who is in close proximity to whom. These are the steps that we take when a positive case is identified, and I think that's important for people to know. First, we will confer with both Jody Elder, who is our nurse leader, and the Public Health[1767.29] Department. Both Joyce Pryor and Teresa Kirsch are the nurses that we work with on the Board of Public Health. And we use, we work with them to clarify the dates of exposure and to start to identify close contacts. The principal contacts the classroom teacher and asks for a list of close contacts. That's the students that have been within six feet masked and unmasked. And then we determine if they're exempt. Finally, we call the families. If we identify a student who is a close contact and they are not exempt, then we call the parent and we let them know that they have been identified as a close contact. We connect them with the public health nurse or one of our school nurses, and they advise the parent as to how to follow the proper process for quarantining. Then we also send emails to families that are in the class. So if a student in a classroom has been identified as positive, we still want to be transparent and inform families. We let them know that their child was exposed. We let them know whether they are either not a close contact at all, or if they were a close contact and are exempt, encouraging them to make sure that they just continue to monitor for symptoms as they go forward. We do suggest families may consider testing if they choose to. We ask them to wait three to five days because any sooner than that is really too soon. And they do that at their own, either at a stop-the-spread site or at their pediatrician's office. We are conducting our COVID testing program. I will let you know that we are still waiting for supplies to arrive. And I think, this is the rather dense slide, I think I have it broken down a little closer here. Our symptomatic testing intestines, they rely on the Binax Now rapid tests that will be coming. They have not yet arrived. The state has had, has not quite shipped them for all the districts yet. This is something that's happening in all of the districts around us. And again, we're eligible for pool testing, but we're not conducting pool testing right now on a regular basis. When we have those test and stay kits, what they will allow students to do is if they have been identified as a close contact and would otherwise need to be quarantined, but they were in contact at school, we test them in the morning. They're allowed to stay and report to class. It's only available for students that are exposed in school. If the test is negative, they remain. And these are, these are people who would otherwise have to participate for five consecutive If the child is identified as a close contact and a parent does not consent for the test and stay, the parent has two options. One of them is to quarantine for a full seven days, during which a parent may access outside testing on day five, and the child can return on day eight. Or if they choose not to test at all, the protocol calls for a full 10-day quarantine, and then day of exposure for that is considered day zero. Just a reminder, these are the symptoms that we want parents to monitor. We really do appreciate the support of families and parents that, throughout the year that we've had, in making sure they're not sending their child to school when ill. And these are the symptoms that we want them to watch out for. Those that are in bold are true symptoms that are very significantly indicative of COVID. Those at the bottom that are not bolded are really those symptoms that may be more common, but we want to make sure that if they're in combination with another, you would want to make sure that you think about having your child stay home and be tested. This is a reminder on our vaccination rates. We continue to watch them. In Beverly, these are the number of student, of children ages 12 to 15 that have received at least one dose of the vaccine, that is 76%. And in ages 16 to 19, 55% have received at least one dose. We will hold a second mobile clinic at both the middle school and the high school. It's an opportunity for any of our families that wish to have their child vaccinated. The clinic will be held at the end of next week. It will be the second dose clinic for those students who already were vaccinated at our first one. And also, there'll be an opportunity to register for the first dose of vaccine if you so wish. And principals will be sending that information out to families so they can do that. As I said in our last meeting, we're going to continue with our practice of having a district dashboard. It will be updated twice weekly so that everyone will have access to the information that they need regarding the number of cases that we have in our schools. I'll just give you a quick peek at it as it's set up. Not sure where it went. Oh, here it is. So this is our COVID-19 page. The tab is right here on the front of our website. And these are the updates that I have sent, information on the testing program. This is where parents can go to consent for intestines day so that their intestines day consent is on file, so if their child should need to participate, they would be ready to access that. And here is the COVID-19 dashboard as we did last year. We'll keep it up to date. We'll update it on Tuesdays and Fridays. This is over the first three days of school, the number of cases that we saw. There were 14 cases identified that are current active cases, meaning they were in school during a time at which they were considered contagion, to be contagious. And we will continue to follow those. Of the 14 cases, you can see we break it down by school. It is pretty spread across all of our schools right now. But this was just really the first three days of school included in this data. So we'll continue to monitor this. This is posted right on the website, and people will be able to see this on a regular basis. So we update it on Tuesdays and on Fridays.
Ms. Visnick?
Dr. Trowick, can you put the dashboard back up, please? So in any one of those cases, you said that means a child was in school and, like, maybe they didn't realize they weren't feeling well? And then maybe the next day they tested?
So a child is tested, the day that they are tested and they're positive, that would be the day of exposure. And then you go 48 hours before then. So if you, if you test positive on a Tuesday, it's the 48 hours prior that are considered active days for us to go back and contact trace.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you, Madam President. Just two quick questions. Where are we with breaking down the numbers of vaccinated and unvaccinated and by grade level?
Yep. So we're working on that. The dilemma that we have is accessing the information by grade level. So we're working on that. Jody thinks we'll have it for our next meeting in two weeks.
Awesome.
We have information on eighth grade, ninth grade, and 11th grade. So they were, they were working by grade level. So we should have a complete, and actually, thank you for asking that, because we will include that information on our dashboard as well.
Great.
So once we have it available, it'll be posted on the dashboard.
I know, that's a lot of work. So thank you to Nurse Elder. And just one clarification. I understand that if we, as a district, did not follow a mask mandate, that we would, that would be synonymous with, like, not going to school, the mandatory number of days. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, the way that it rolled out is that when the Board of Ed required masks in public schools, then that's, we're required to follow that. And so we had to fill out an adassation that we were opening our schools and that we were following.
Thank you.
I know you had a question on that, so I should have gotten that too soon. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
This is the updated seven-day data for Beverly. Again, this is something that I told you that we would track along the way. As you can see, the incidence rates, this is the average daily incident rate, and it is on the incline. So over the past four weeks, we've gone from nine to 14 to 18, to this past week, we're at 24. So the 24 brings us back to rates that are similar to March, maybe February, March of last year. And that's all I have for today. Happy to answer any questions. Although I did already do some.
Were there any additional questions for Dr. Trocheck this evening on the opening of schools? Okay. I guess we will move along to our committee reports. Gosh, it was a while ago. Ms. Visnick, you are bringing forward a little bit of information from your last finance and facilities that met after our regular school committee. So go ahead.
So the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities last met on June 23rd, before the very last day of school, right? And in that meeting, we did our usual end-of-the-year school wrap-up, including transfers. We always review the BNG report. And Mr. Collins was there and announced that they had offered the position of the head of BNG. So that was the big news during that meeting. And we're scheduled to next meet two weeks from today, Wednesday, September 22nd, at 6:30 in the evening for an hour. As you said, we voted to stack all our meetings. So in the, in our last meeting, we had a small amount of money in our gifts to schools. And so the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends that we accept the whopping total of $35.42 as a gift to schools.
I would make that motion to accept that gift of $35.42 with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, so that is the end of our report. We have not yet met this year. Like I said, we'll meet two weeks from today at 6:30 right here.
Thank you so much, Ms. Visnick. Mr. Malady, we haven't put into practice this back-to-back meeting. I'm not sure if you're going to report out on the meeting that was just prior.
I'm going to do the best I can.
Okay, thanks.
So we met this evening. Let me gather my notes. And we had a couple of presentations. The first one was from our ELA curriculum and adoption, where we heard from, I'm going to try to get Cynthia Santa Soso. I tried, Cynthia. I know you corrected Dr. Flaherty. And I thought this was a great opportunity for us to get an idea of some of the work that goes on behind the scenes in our ELA programs. So one of the things that we learned was that we have several non-negotiables, as our school district is trying out two programs during the month of October for a final ELA program, which will be decided in April. I think it's important to emphasize what these non-negotiables are for our district. The first one is rigorous, the program should be rigorous but provide scaffolds and allow it to be accessible for all students. It should meet expectations on curate and ed reports. There should be rubrics on consensus, on review tools, and review criteria. It should follow the science of reading. It should meet expectations for culturally responsive resources. It should also include a review of our current core programs, which involves Reading Street, Foundations, and Hegerday, and allow for interdisciplinary projects, including PBL. We have our final four for our programs, which, I don't have them in my notes, I apologize. Sorry, Dot. Give me one minute, I have them. Our final four are the American Reading Company, CKEYLA, EL, and Witten Wisdom. And this year, what our school district is doing is they're having each of the teachers try out four of the programs, instead of having the programs go out to individual schools. So this will allow our teachers to have a maximum opportunity to try different programs and see what program has the best fit. We also had some updates on our PD during the summer. We had several Beverly teachers take part in a professional development program called, If Equity is a Priority, UDL is a must. We had over 20 teachers from Beverly take part in this program. There's over 100 teachers from across Massachusetts who are there. And this is led by Katie Novak and Mirko Chardon. And then finally, we had an amazing opportunity for our high school students. We have Lieutenant Norris from the US Navy, a Medal of Honor recipient, speak to our students at Beverly High School, as well as a Q and A and some comments made by our principal, Betty Taylor. And then finally, some very good news. BHS Fall Sports Clubs and Activities, we have over 26 clubs and activities that are in the process or already up and running. Fall sports are back. Drama auditions are taking place. The play is Clue. And we also have activities taking place over at BMS, including the National Junior Honors Society, Student Council, cross-country, as well as drama auditions for Schoolhouse Rock Live. Our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, October 13th, at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malady. I'd also like to just mention Heidi Moran also was presenting as one of the literacy coaches, and we appreciate that in-depth presentation and look forward to digging into it more, to get a better understanding of these four programs that all look very interesting. Thank you. The negotiating subcommittee, we also met this evening, and, which is why we have an executive session planned for further down the agenda. We've regularly met throughout the summer as we continue to negotiate with our collective bargaining, our collective bargaining obligations. Meet our collective bargaining obligations. Thank you. And then the policy review subcommittee is overdue to meet, and we will, we will get to it when we get to it, you know? It's urgent, important, they're all important, some are more urgent. So we've been balancing our meetings this summer. That brings us to communications from school committee members. Are there communications that members wish to present in this open forum? Mayor Cahill?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll do a couple. First, in reading through the minutes from, I guess it was the June meeting where I gave an update on the efforts to nail down the final terms of the solar array, what you call the interconnection service agreements with National Grid. And I said that they had, the projected cost for those connections had climbed from about $400,000 to $1.1 million. We spent a lot of time working with National Grid, and most of that additional cost has been knocked back down. We got them to agree to the original design for how to handle the connection at the high school. And they also were looking to have us bear the cost of a, an upgrade to the booster station over by, between McEwen and McKay School. And on further investigation, it turns out they're planning to upgrade that station two years from now. So we were able to convince them that it really should be on their dime, not ours. So at any rate, since it was in the minutes, I figured maybe it now can be in these minutes that we're back down a lot closer to that original projected number, which will help when we get to the, to be ready to have Kirsage come back and have us look together at the contract terms, you'll see much more favorable terms as a result in terms of their payments. The other thing I wanted to just touch on, because we've been slogging through this with this new turf field, which by the way, well, first, let me say, we're scheduled to have the testers on-site first thing Monday morning to test the completed field so that it can pass its concussion rating test. That assumes that everything that we've been told over the last couple of days by Act Global about the trucks, trucking the balance of the infill up here by Saturday morning, and that they'll be working all weekend to get that finished. So the goal is, at this point, we've had several target dates with them, and the new target date, which we really hope is the real one, is that this Monday, the field will be cleared, it'll be ours entirely, and our fall sports will get to start using it Monday afternoon.
Thank you for those communications. Are there other members that received communications they'd like to bring to the open forum? Mr. Malady first.
Okay. I have, I have three that I'd like to share. One was questioning about sports at the middle school, and I spoke with this resident and asked them to contact Mr. Keefe, as well as Dr. Trocheck, about increasing the sports offerings at, here at the middle school. The other one that I had is, sometimes I always share the good ones, but I wanted to share this one that wasn't. It was kind of like a, a little bit of mixed bag. When the opening line is, "I don't know you, so I won't judge you," you know they're going to judge you. But I will say this, that, and I thought this is important. This is a good example, as the email continues, that it's clear that this constituent, I don't see eye to eye in some issues, but he included this sentence, "Decore is important, and so are manners," and so forth. And I know I have been incredibly guilty of letting my passions get in the way and cloud my judgment. I think it's just a nice reminder to ourselves and to the public that we are people, too. And then the final conversations I had with a constituent was in regards to masks. And after a couple of phone calls and emails, it became very clear to me that, again, this is an individual that I'm assuming we're not going to see eye to eye in certain national or political issues. But at the end of the day, it becomes very clear that this parent and several of the parents who spoke today, they're trying to do what's best for their kids. And I think when we boil it down, it's important to keep that in mind, and also for the public to keep in mind that we're also doing the best that we can and trying to keep the kids safe. And it's just a good reminder that we have to focus on those commonalities, and sometimes we lose sight of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malady. Ms. Visnick, I saw your hand next.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a constituent reach out to me to ask about why, at the high school, there was some furniture being disposed, disposed of. And I, actually, the mayor and I were meeting the day that I got that message, but I then didn't follow up on that at all. I didn't forward it to Dr. Trocheck or ask any questions. So, but, so I apologize for that. I don't know if you want to address it or not. I'll just keep going for right now. I had a constituent ask about where we stand with the share table policy, especially in the time of COVID. So I think those are two distinct and separate things. I think that my favorite Bean Queen over there and I, in FNF, need to have on one of our agendas to work on that policy, shore it up, and then bring it forward. And then we can look at what does it mean to think about sharing in the time of COVID. A lot of conversation about traffic, especially around the middle school. Dr. Trocheck, I have a very nice compliment about your ability to direct traffic. And a lot of questions around why, why Cummings, why the parents are no longer allowed to park at Cummings. And, and then also, like Mr. Malady, a question around middle school sports, and specifically whether the intermural programs would be started this year. I don't have a middle schooler anymore, so I feel pretty out of touch with what happens in this building now.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Do other members have any communications? I'll share a few.
I'll share a few. I think many of us maybe received the same message from constituents regarding masking and vaxing mandates on both sides of the topic. And I thank constituents for sharing their concerns, providing poignant examples, and also joining with us here this evening. I think there were a few repeats from those who have concerns on both sides. I had a constituent ask me a question about how we handle gifts to schools, and I think it might be clear for us, but it might be an opportunity for us to make sure the public understands when they're giving money, where it goes, what the process is, and whether they're allowed to designate exactly what it is to be spent for and how to follow through on that. So that's an opportunity for us. And I will give Ms. Sherburne and Dr. Trocheck some of the information about a specific example. Also, I had received some questions about making busing more widely available, along the lines of Ms. Visnick's conversations about traffic and drop-offs and pickup routines. There have been a lot of questions asked about why we don't do more to support busing, and I look forward to that conversation on a future agenda item, possibly coming out of FNF or wherever we find the agenda time for that topic. I feel like I had a lot of emails since we last met, because it's been a whole summer since our last regular school committee meeting, but I think those are the basics. One last call? Okay. So now is the time where we will say goodbye to our friends on BEV CAM in just a moment, after we take our vote to enter into executive session. This is the time where the chair makes a motion to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30a, Section 21a, for purposes seven and three. Purpose seven is to review and approve the minutes of the negotiating Subcommittee and Committee of the Whole from the 29th of July, as well as the 25th of August. And then for purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with our Beverly Teachers Association, Unit A. Because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and not to return to open session, the motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. This requires a roll call vote. Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. We have recorded a vote zero to seven, a seven to zero, sorry. It is 8:46 p.m. The regular open session is now adjourned. We are adjourning into executive session. Thank you again, BEV CAM, and, um, yeah. Yeah, why don't, why don't we go to the main office?